Next item, please. Other report, college readiness.
So we have Dr. Mousalem with Ms. Peterson and Dr. Patterson, I believe.
Dr. Choco.
They're gonna, it'll be the three of them, but they all kind of worked on it together as a team.
Good evening, President Mead, Board Trustees, Dr. Malakow. So, this evening, we're gonna spend some time talking about college and career readiness, and, you know, how we, as a district, can work to ensure we're enhancing the opportunities for our students. And, as you see there, based on moving on needs. So, in this presentation, we're gonna discuss the components of college and career readiness. The, understand what college readiness is compared to career readiness. College and career readiness are two terms that are intertwined on a constant basis, and sometimes I think there's a misunderstanding on how each impact one another and, and how each are different from one another. We're gonna look at some federal state supports, as well as how the teacher preparation and articulation is going to be focused on, in reference to helping prepare our students for college and career readiness. Some, real quick mechanisms that are gonna impact college and career readiness is the Marshall Plan for Talent. There'll be a quick slide on the Marshall Plan for Talent. That's a presentation for another day, but the Marshall Plan for Talent is to bring that consortium of industry leaders, as well as local colleges and universities together, to identify how our readiness in the high schools preparing students for industry. Also, the MI squared program is something that I've been working and talking with Henry Ford College concerning job possibilities prior to graduation and preparing students so that they can go in front of employers. Again, our regional partnerships, and a key and crucial component is our collaboration. The collaboration between the coordinators, the teachers, assessment, and college readiness. So, what is college readiness? Well, you know, college readiness, very simply put, is students meet the requirements as established by the PSAT/SAT to be prepared for college. And what we're doing in the classroom to prepare them thus far. Career readiness focuses specifically on are students prepared to enter industry, high needs industry areas post-secondary? Do they have the soft skills? Do they have the skill sets? Do they have the ability to go from high school into industry and then work with our partners in local colleges such as Henry Ford College? So, when you're looking at career and college readiness, that's where the separation is, but where they are in tandem is the preparation in the high school classroom. This graph here, and this chart here, and then I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Patterson to talk about the data, illustrates what the benchmark scores are on the PSAT and SAT to be considered college-ready. And, as you see there for the SAT, it's 480 on evidence-based reading and writing, and 530 on the math, math benchmarks. So, I'll turn it over to Dr. Patterson.
Before we take a look at our essay, most recent SAT scores, I wanted to take a moment and just take a look at what our current college enrollment rate is for the, for the district. So, the graph that you're taking a look at is the percentage of our graduating students that have enrolled in a two- or four-year degree program within 12 months after graduating. So, this shows the last five years of data. The most current year that we have is the 2015-16 graduating class, and what you can see is that our district is well above the state average. In 2011-12, we're at 83.5% of our seniors enrolling in college 12 months after graduation. That's actually gone up to 86.4 in the last five years, whereas you can see that the, the state has actually seen a slight decline in that. We just wanted to show that that's our actual college-going rate. If you take a look at our most current SAT scores, and you'll get an opportunity to look at this and some other data in a little more detail next month when I come back and report on our most recent assessment scores. But our most current year scores are in evidence-based reading and writing. We have 56% of our students meeting the benchmark on that. You can see that that's around the same as the state level, slightly higher than Wayne County, and for math, 36%, again, close to the state average and above the Wayne County average. I'll turn it back over to Dr. Mousalem.
Thank you, Dan. So, that information there in terms of the benchmarks and where the students hit the benchmarks, basically, according to the College Board, what that means is that students that hit those benchmarks, they have a 75% chance of attaining a C in their English and/or math class in college their freshman year. That's where those benchmarks represent. And therefore, according to the College Board, that's, you know, considered college-ready because if they're attaining a C, they're hitting the general requirements, and then hopefully they improve from there.
C or higher.
C or higher, yes. At, at a minimum threshold of a C. So, when we look at college readiness, you know, the key component to college readiness is creating that systemic seamless conversation between our teachers, the students, the principals, the coordinators, and what are their expectations? What are their expectations? And how do their expectations meet the needs of what the College Board identifies as a minimum threshold? But to take it even a step further, what, how do their expectations meet the needs of our local partners? For example, Henry Ford College. When we talk to, you know, students at Henry Ford College, we talk to the professors at Henry Ford College, how are we creating that systemic seamless conversation? Because I think that's the key thing. Talking with University of Michigan Dearborn as one of our partners, Wayne State University. And when we talk with Henry Ford College, a key component of that is the aspect that the students that attend Henry Ford College are students of whom are looking to get that next step, to grow. So, that, so the readiness challenges and strengths come down to sharing the information that we receive with district curriculum committees, sharing that information that we receive with the forums and the district curriculum council. And then when it comes to career readiness, a key component here, and this is the direction, and I know Dr. Mead, ever since I was, came into the role as an executive director, he's always talked to me about, you know, how are we getting students ready for industry? We've always had those conversations. And I know that's a conversation statewide. And with this Marshall Plan for Talent and the MI squared, and I, and I want to thank President Cavalluna because him and his team have been extremely supportive, you know, when requesting data and, and as a partner. I mean, they've been, they, I haven't heard one time where we can't do that. All I hear from, you know, President Cavalluna and his team is, you know, okay, let's look at it. How, how can we make this happen? So, I appreciate that, and I wanted to say that publicly. But we have to look at our CTE programming, and we have to identify within our CTE programming across the district, how does it relate to rigorous standards in order to prepare students for industry? Because, right now, we have possibilities to get students to get into hydraulics, to get into hypodynamics, to move into the fields of, you know, the, the carpentry fields, and they're available, they're there. There are gonna be over 200,000 jobs available in the next five to six years. So, how are we aligning our CTE standards and our merit curriculum standards to fit those needs? A major component of this is something that we really have to continue to emphasize in the high school and embed in the high school instruction, and in our middle schools as well, is preparation for the soft skills. In the conversations we've been having with our industry partners, they say, please, work with the students on their soft skills. Resume writing, interviewing, developing portfolios, having that informal and formal conversation. Build those soft skills with our students. And, you know, it, it's key, and it's crucial, and I'm sure all of you in your industries use see that on a regular basis. Real quick, the Marshall Plan for Talent, I, I've mentioned that. That's gonna be a key component. And the key component of this Marshall Plan for Talent is, again, working with our partner, Henry Ford College. As Henry Ford College is a convenor, we've submitted the grant. We're waiting on a response from the state of Michigan on this grant. But bringing these industry leaders together at the table and having these conversations, direct, informal, and formal conversations is going to help us in this process. Here's just a quick breakdown of our organizational chart of the district. Put this together, flow chart and areas of responsibility and partnerships for cooperation. As you can see in the white flow chart, it's a, just a quick description of just some of the things that I, as the executive director of community relationships and partnerships and, and, and college and career readiness, haven't, you know, working with the key areas. And, you know, working in partnership with the three executive directors and the principals. You know, providing support for college options is key. Developing new college partnerships. Just today, Mrs. Peterson and I had a meeting with one of the local colleges, and we've been, I've been in conversations with University of Michigan Dearborn, as well as Wayne State. And additionally, you know, working in collaboration with Mrs. Peterson as she supervises and is responsible for all Henry Ford College partnerships. And then taking apprenticeships to the next level. Looking at apprenticeships within the Dearborn Public Schools, which is a conversation we've been having, as well as looking at apprenticeships outside of the Dearborn Public Schools with local industry. Another key component to this is teacher talent preparation. As you heard earlier, you know, executive director Mrs. Farage, working in the new teacher collaboration, but also, we're working closely with the University of Michigan Dearborn and Wayne State University to identify teachers in the Dearborn Public Schools whose initial certification is from their universities, and working with them and identifying what we can do to support and how they can support us in the college and preparing students in our, for our classrooms. And what's nice about that is I sit on the Wayne State University Advisory Board for their accreditation, so we're working closely with the, the Higher Learning Commission on that. Another quick graph on a triangulation of support and partnerships is some things that we have to do, triangulating with Henry Ford College, U of M, Wayne State, as, as discussed, working with Mrs. Peterson with the articulation agreements and the expectations and teacher prep, as well as connecting all that to industry. And I think that's gonna be the key point. Our, our agreements as what we're doing with Henry Ford College, U of M, and Wayne State, is it connected to industry, and are we doing what we need to do in the high school classroom? One other thing I'd like to talk about, Mrs. Yona Geracy, the supervisor for adult education, is here. I wanted to mention what an excellent job her and her team is doing. She's sitting in the back over there. But she and her team, because I know she's not gonna wanna come up, but she and her team should, are doing an excellent job with adult education, and through this, come on up, Yona. Through this, I'm gonna embarrass her right now. Through this process, Yona has, and her team has done a nice job in identifying how we can truly create wraparound services, college and career readiness. And I just wanted Yona to come up just so everybody can see who Yona is, because I know you hear her name a lot, and she's, she's shy, and she's always in the background. But this is Yona Geracy, the supervisor for adult education. And a key thing here is that wraparound services. Developing that link for the parents, the grandparents, the aunts and uncles, whose students are in our classrooms.
Yona, thank you for being up there. And while we're on that note, it would be, it would be nice to hear from, from you or adult education, to see what is, what is happening in that department. We often hear great things. It would be nice to see a presentation, kind of let us know where you're at, hopefully at a future item.
We can do that, for sure.
Invite us, and you're welcome.
I was gonna say, Eo's always ready to give a presentation. I said, Eo's always ready to give a presentation.
Yes, would love to hear from you.
No, thank you. So, I'll turn over to Mrs. Peterson.
So, our early colleges actually are two of our stars, really, both the advanced manufacturing and the health system on college and career readiness, because those students end up starting college classes early, and we can see from their SAT scores that they far out exceed the district and the state there. But I think it's also a perfect setting. You know, our health system students go down and spend time at Henry Ford Health System every week. They really get to learn what health careers they're interested in, what they're not interested in, as they do their rotations. And the same, we, we're offering similar opportunities for advanced manufacturing, but it's not quite as, as pretty and packaged as with the health system. But both schools are doing quite well. And interestingly enough, Dr. Malakow mentioned the two-year first-year conference that I went to. College and, college readiness, they had lots of different definitions for. And, and the SAT is one way to measure college readiness. Most of our students that go to Henry Ford College, when you consider dual enrollment, they take college coursework. Many of them have not met the benchmark on the SAT, yet 93% of our students get a C or higher, so that's just something to think about. One measure can't decide it all.
Very important.
And then our collegiate academy students also do very well. The difference between the early college and the collegiate academy students, remember, is early college students decide in eighth grade. They have to pass the eighth grade, and they have to be reading at sixth grade level to apply for the early college. Our collegiate academy students have met the career, have met the college benchmarks on the SAT, and those students also are very successful. We've increased the cohort size from 40 to now 138, and you can see from the data there that 68% plan to go on after they finish their associate degree for a four-year, and many of them go right into the workforce.
To quickly summarize, with the flexibility in graduation requirements, we have the opportunity to truly look at college and career readiness from a different lens. We, we have to expand, expand the understanding to our community of what is college and career readiness, what are the options that are available for students, and also continue to grow. I believe that we have to create a seamless systemic system where we are the glue between K-12 college and industry. Questions?
Trustee Patterson.
I talk about this a lot over the years, starting with my own college experience back in the mid-'70s. And one of the things I don't see included in here that I think needs to be considered, we don't do a very good job, and I know we are, have much improved since my college days, on advising students. Give, exposing them to what their opportunities are, what career alternatives there are out there, what they would look like, what they would need to get there. We pretty much just say, hey, pick something, you know, at a certain grade, and start to, you know, focus in that direction. But we don't give them real strong guidance in that regards. There's nothing in here that talks about student services of any kind in that regard. There's no advisors, there's no student counseling, there's nothing like that that would help the students actually understand what their options are, and how to go about actually fine-tuning it so that they are successful. And I know my own girls, when they began, kind of floundered around as most, as a lot of students do, took a lot of different courses trying to figure out on their own what they could actually find a path towards, and wasted a lot of time, a lot of money, not theirs, until they decided on a path. And that was post-secondary. That wasn't starting at the high school level or before. We just don't do a good job at any level. P-14 and beyond, quite frankly, in helping students figure that out and, and what they need. Are we going to try to incorporate that at some point into this?
So, I, I do want to mention real quick, and I'll turn it over to Mrs. Peterson, because she's been working with the high school counselors. There is, in one of the slides, I did, I didn't speak of it. It's, and it, it's under career readiness. It says educational development plan, starting in middle school. It's going to be a state law that every student, starting in middle school.
Yeah, I do remember hearing something about that.
Develops their individual educational development plan, wherein they start looking at different industries, they start looking at different areas of interest, and then that also leads into the Fortson Academies, and it also leads into the Marshall Plan for Talent. If you wanted to add anything.
So, our counselors do do some career counseling already. They start in the seventh grade. Students are involved in career cruising. So, this, the counselors facilitate that, where they really talk about interests, they take some interest inventories on, on career cruising, and it tells them what their interests, what fields that they align with. Fortson through the academies is, right now, piloting, it's called YoU Science, Y-O-U Science. I always thought it was youth science when Hyam first told me about it. And it goes past interest inventories, and they take aptitude tests, and it aligns with best-fit careers. So, all of those students are doing that right now, and our counselors took a look at that, and we haven't renewed career cruising yet, and they really feel that they may be a better fit, because counselors need some assistance and some support in figuring out how to do this as well. You risk the, you know, you don't wanna, you don't wanna pigeonhole a student, right? So, you wanna make sure that you have a way of exposing them to many careers. That is what the, the academies is doing at Fortson. Her team, last year, they did career exploratory for the ninth-grade students. So, they've, they've had a little bit more than what all of our students have, and the Fortson counselors this year are going through a certification for career counseling, and the executive, executive directors and I discussed that our other counselors probably need to do that for, in the future as well, so that they have a little more knowledge, and there's actually a way to get them certified so that they can be a little more systematic about how we approach students. So, there is a little bit going on.
Is there any online kind of software that allows students to kind of take assessments, interest inventories?
That's what YoU Science does. Career cruising does a little bit, but it's more about interests, right?
Yes.
YoU Science takes interests, learning styles, and aptitudes. And actually, I got an account, so I was taking some of those tests. It's taken me a little while, though, because it's spatial reasoning and, and numbers and patterns and all sorts of stuff, and then it puts them in, not only are, this is what you're interested in, but this is what your aptitudes say you're also gonna be, you have really strengths for. So, Fortson is piloting that right now.
But then, pretty much, the goal is to get into families of careers, right? Where their interests and abilities kind of align with families of careers, so that they can see that there are many, many careers relative to their interests and their, and their abilities.
Right, and that's, and I'm sure I can get all of the board members to log into YoU Science if you wanna check it out. Well, I'm not done yet, because it takes a while.
Or a mechanic, or a principal?
It takes a while, but I will tell you that Academy coach at Fortson said she took it, and it actually, what she's doing right now is exactly what she should be doing. So, it was very interesting. But I'm not done yet.
Okay, so.
I'm, I'm working on it, but.
Well, the college has a focus, focus too, I think, is what it is, and it's ACT-based, so that students can take this assessment online for abilities, interests, and their values, and they relate those to families of careers, and then the student can actually do the investigation of those careers in the same software.
Right, and that's what YoU Science does. Now, our students do take work keys, gives them a little bit of information.
Okay, but I'm sure.
But YoU Science, they can actually go in, they'll see what a day in, they'll get to see what the day in, in the career looks like, a day in the life of being whatever, and they can look at how much money they're gonna make, what the job outlook is.
Good.
Where they would go to school.
That's where the values come from.
All that, right, right.
Okay, so it's.
Right, so, we, we're, we've done a little bit more, but we're looking at other options, because the counselors really didn't feel like career cruising had as much to offer as, as this new program out there.
Okay, thank you. First, trustee.
Who? Trustee Wayne.
You had your hand up first.
Well, okay, I'll, I'll go first then. Thank you, Mrs. Peterson, for bringing up something which I think is rarely mentioned, which is that most of our students graduate and actually do go on to school, and they do go on to jobs, and they're not abysmal failures. But there has been a war on public education, and that wants to prove that our students aren't career and college-ready, and they are. It matters greatly how and when you test them. So, I learned myself from anecdotes, and I remember a compatriot of my daughter's who took an exam at HFC and, and didn't, was not college-ready for math. I mean, after three weeks, and she succeeded, but, you know, so, I did want to ask Dr. Patterson, Mrs. Peterson has mentioned some of the soft things, the non-academic things. We control the testing environment here. We make sure that our students have apples or whatever, that it's a quiet environment. How do we do that when, without our partners like Mr. Cavalluna at Henry Ford College guaranteeing that the environment for testing is good? So, are there, are there other things that universities and colleges can do, or should do, to make sure that students, or we can do, to make our students successful and able to show on the test that they can do?
I don't know if there's an easy answer for that. I, I really think that it's a matter of having multiple pathways to show that proficiency. So, like you said, that you had a, a daughter that didn't initially show that she was ready for the class, but once she was in there, she, she was successful. And I think that that's something that we need to really consider when it comes to college and career readiness, is that there's no single measure that's a perfect predictor of a student's success, and that although a student might be successful in one area, there's many different talents that, that they have that come out in, in different ways. And so, having a kind of one universal way for a kind of identifying that future pathway is not necessarily the easiest thing to do. But I think it's really just making sure that our, our students kind of know, early on, kind of what their strengths are, and how to, how to develop those and kind of play into those strengths.
I'm very concerned for the third-grade reading with exactly that point, because you know, if, if you've been tested yourself, and most of us have, and you know from your, your sons and daughters that they might be third-grade reading level and maybe fifth-grade math, or maybe the reverse, or, so that, that's really worrying me, that we'll be, the state will have mandate to us that we hold back students that are advanced in one area and behind in another. It's, I think it's a real concern. I think the state is going to hear howls from the public when that happens, so we'll see what happens, but.
Trustee Amud.
Okay, well, first of all, I'd like to thank Dr. Malakow for, I know we had originally requested to hear from the team, specifically to know, Dr. Mousalem, your new role as, what you're doing, and I know that college readiness is something that we're all passionate about, right? And we know that we're doing great. And I appreciate this position because we can, like I say, we can always do better, right? So, other than what we've been doing, I know that you have been working with the colleges and even people in the workforce to kind of tell us what they're looking for in our students. Is this being, are you taking this back to whether it's high school coordinators? Are we meeting with teachers to tell them, you know, this is what employers are looking for? What is the process? How, how are you working around this to make sure that it's being communicated? We all know that it does take a village, right? So, are we making sure that when it comes to that vision that trustee Palichkov was talking about, and I think that many of our students struggle with that, and it does have to start in the classroom, right? It's not enough for us to just talk to universities and the college, which I'm glad that there's been good communication with President Cavalluna, and I'm not surprised. But it's gotta start in the classroom. So, I wanna know, I know we talked about the counselors, but what are the efforts that you're taking in terms of making sure that that's being communicated, that all stakeholders are there? I wanna know how, you know, and, and how are we working with the different partnerships throughout the district? With that, with that being said, have you seen, in terms of your work with U of M, Wayne State, and Henry Ford College, and are those the only three that we're working with right now in, in your specific position? Have you seen, you know, I, I know that Dr. Cavalluna has been great, but can we do anything else to assist you with, you know, the other universities and so on? I wanna hear the substance. I know that things are great, but what are we doing differently now?
So, we just started having conversations, just last week, we had a meeting, myself and the executive directors, and, and we talked about, you know, how do we streamline this process? How do we streamline this information? And what we came up with is, you know, I, for example, I attended instructional cabinet the week prior to talk about our partnership with Wayne State and U of M, and to go to elementary forum and as well as middle school and high school forum, to talk to them about a survey that we wanna give teachers in terms of identifying where their initial certification was, so we can get a real tally. And, and part of the conversation was that as we continue working with the university, so right now with U of M and Wayne State, it's been more of a conversation on the teacher prep. That's where most of our conversation has been thus far. My work with Henry Ford College has really revolved around a lot right now, the Marshall Plan for Talent, as well as some grants we've been going after for adult education. And what I'd like to do, and I've talked to Mrs. Peterson about this a little bit more, is having more conversations with the college professors and the different teams that they already have in place, and, and ta, talking with, you know, the different, you know, the teachers, and, and talking with the coordinators and the principals, and bringing together the information that I find and delivering that to the high school principals, the middle school principals, delivering that to the high school coordinators, possibly even the high school counselors, delivering that information, what I'm seeing, so that they're aware of what our discussions are and what we're seeing and moving forward. In terms of looking at next steps, that's something that we're still, you know, we're, we're looking at how can we make this work? Because we don't wanna do anything that's redundant, but at the same time, we wanna look and try to find, what can we do new? What, what? What, what, not new in terms of changing something, but possibly looking at what we have in place and making it better. So right now, as I'm collecting information, I'm taking it to instructional cabinet. I'm taking it to the executive directors and then taking that to forums through that process.
Collecting data at this point.
Collecting information, collecting data, and then sharing that information and that data with the teams. And then, you know, having them dive into that a little bit more.
We actually do have a meeting with science and, high school science and math teachers Friday on the half-day. They're meeting with Henry Ford College professors to look at curriculum and essential standards. So that, this is something that actually Mr. Fadallah has done with our early colleges. And it's something that we just decided our other high school teachers could benefit from. So that's already planned for this Friday. And so opportunities like that as well. I, I do want you to make sure that everyone understands, our district curriculum committees, our high school curriculum committees have been focused on this all along.
Yes, I know that.
So, and Dr. Patterson, Dr. Masalim and I met with the coordinators in August. And when I was at Fortson the other day, what they learned from Dr. Patterson in August, they've, they've even gone further on to look at just reading levels of, of selections in the SAT. What reading levels they're using, question stems. Like they're starting to talk lexiles and really look down into what's going on in the classroom that way as well. So the more information we give them, the better able they'll be to continue the work that they've been doing.
Yeah, we want to make sure that information is channeled through, in, into the classrooms. All the information that you're getting is actually channeled through.
Trustee Barry.
Dr. Masalim, just to follow up on what trustee Amud's getting at here. I think Henry Ford College, you're having an easier time there because relationships have been built. Do you see your role as getting out into the community? Maybe getting involved with some of the key leaders at, you know, U of M, Dearborn, Wayne State, maybe other schools? Do you, do you see that as part of your role or building those relationships?
I, I do, I do. And recently, currently, the relationships I build with U of M and Wayne State have been through the School of Education, with the assistant dean and deans, of whom I have some previous relationships with as well because of my work with both universities, both through the different district, as well as my work as an adjunct professor. So we've, like, we've started those conversations in terms of, you know, teacher prep. And then as we, and, and, because that's going to take on a lot right now because they're both going through accreditation. And as I'm talking to them, I'm also having those conversations with them to speak with their faculty about what are all students? I mean, it's not even just Dearborn students. But when you have students coming into your university as freshmen, what is it that they need? And then that's where I bring that information back to the district through these committees that I mentioned, to have those conversations and those discussions. But I think it is crucial that we do. And, and again, you know, like I said, Mrs. Peterson and I both met with another college today looking at some other articulation ideas.
Very exciting. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thanks. I'd just like to say thank you to Dr. Malenko, too, for recognizing this position that you have. I think it's very, very critical for our future. So thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Just very brief, I just want to advocate for the soft skills in that conversation. I remember even, for me, with taking certain tests when I was going for my PhD. And I would say, I did graduate and I had a successful dissertation, but they gave you that test that you had to take. At the time, for me, it was the Miller's analogy test, analogies, which really wasn't related to anything I did in my. Yeah, so it's something, you know, I see those soft skills as the leadership, the perseverance. Those are huge, the determination, working together. Those are things that helped me get through, I have four degrees and that, that's what it was. It was all those, you know, the, the work. We heard a student here earlier talk about work ethic. And really, it comes down to a lot of that. And again, of course, you need certain skills and things and development. But I would just say that from personal experience for myself. Thank you.
Just a follow-up statement. We're, we're a great school district, without a doubt. And to the comm majors out there, they, they know what I, you know, what I practice. I practice creating opportunities through conflict. Conflict is probably not a negative thing all the time. But when you start a discussion, some people start questioning, like, where's he going with this? What's going on? Yeah, we just want to keep growing and getting better and better. So yeah, thank you for creating this position. And I am very, very excited on where we might be five years from now, three to five years, hopefully sooner. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Next item, action items. Special consideration of an action item. Are there any, just for the record, we did have a supplement to action item number nine under human resources at the table. Hopefully we got a chance to see that. Are there any agenda items on this agenda which board members or the superintendent wish to discuss and vote on separately? If there are, we will exclude these from the motion below.
Hearing none.
Okay. Motion to approve action items. Recommended action. Move that action items numbered one through 15 be approved as recommended in this agenda.
It's been moved and supported for all these action items. Is there any further discussion on these items? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, unanimous, please. Next item.
This is my favorite part. Some of your agenda.
Oh, you get to read everything.
Did you want to read them?
No, I don't.
Number one, approval of warrants. Number two, approval of contract to CW, CDW Government Incorporated for partner and boards. Number three, approval of lease agreement with Littlefield Presbyterian Church. Number four, approval of contract to ADD Unit. Excuse me. Approval of con, number five, approval of contract to Velasis Sales and Marketing. Number six through seven, approval of change orders. Number eight through 11, approval of non-instructional and instructional personnel items for P through 12. Number 12, approval of 2018, 2019 superintendent goals. Number 13, approval of financial statement. Number 14, approval of policy updates slash changes per board report 18-42. And number 15, approval of donations. Next item, next item is discussion items. We have two. The first one is policy updates.
I have asked trustee. Policies. Especially since she was heavily involved with one of them.
Okay, so I'm going to be really quick. We voted on two policies that we had discussed, discussed over the past couple of months, which were the information systems with internet safety and acceptable use and the informational systems for, for students. So one was for staff and one was for students. So we have some policies that were brought to us today that we wanted to review, which included physical examinations, unrequested leaves of absence, and weapons. And we sent two of them back for further consideration. We wanted to talk about them more in detail. But the ones that we're going to be voting on next month include the Promise Zone proposal, which is the one that I'm really super excited about. And Dr. Masalim's going to be talking about that more in detail. So I don't want to tell you too much about that. The student supervision and welfare, staff ethics, drug-free workplace, and zero tolerance guidelines.
Can I just mention something, too? I appreciate the support of the unions on some of these policies. We talked about, there was a letter, a joint letter that we sent out to staff just on the supervision and guidelines and substance abuse. So they jointly were with us on, and Dr. Mead signed it, representing the board.
And we're making sure that none of our policies are actually in conflict with any of our bargaining agreements or with our contracts with the unions. So we're always trying to keep that in mind as well.
And trying to coordinate those with the college policies as well. Particularly the bylaws.